They should light up. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order right on the dot almost to 5:30. Does anyone have any comments about the agenda before we dive right into it?
I would, Mr. Chair, ask if maybe we could do our presentation first and forego the minutes for a minute. Because we've got people stacking up trying to do COVID, that protocol.
Yeah, well, sure. Why not? I don't care. So leave me down. Where are we going? Number three?
Number three.
Presentation from Aunt Maggie's Farm Medical Marijuana Caregivers. Who's here representing Aunt Maggie's Farm? Can you come up to the podium, please?
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, okay, good. Aunt Maggie's Farm is a new company we've just formed. Our intention is to provide medical marijuana. We have caregiver cards from the state of Maine, individual caregiver cards, which permits us to do that. We're looking to find a location from which we can provide medical marijuana products. That would include these various kinds of products you can put together from that source. One of them is edibles, and that's a very popular item, and we have a bakery that will provide that. So that's our goal. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the distinction between medical marijuana and the recreational side. You are, so I won't go into that if I don't need to. But we're going to focus on medical marijuana, which means that anyone that comes to our site would have to have a medical marijuana card, which permits them, from a doctor, to come and purchase this product. That's very limited. And our intention is to have a site whereby they will come in the front, and they would not be able to get back to where the product is or where we are until we've seen their card, validated the card, and also the driver's license to prove that's who they are. And then from that point, then they can purchase, they can see the product and purchase the product. That'd be separated. That's our intention. It's kind of like a doctor's office or a pharmacy where you can't reach across and grab that product. It's separated and protected. That's pretty much our intention. We do have a location that we found that's on Bennett Drive, 159 Bennett Drive, which is down, and it seems to be perfect for what we need, and from what we can tell, it would work very well. So we have a use permit application we've submitted to Ken, and I guess that's why we're here.
So the location was Imperial Hair Care Products that we did a use permit for.
This town on the...
Just over a year ago.
In the old registry building?
Yeah. And so that's become vacant again.
Yeah, there were considerations like security for the building with cameras and lights and whatever. Obviously signage, we'll discuss and we'll get that approved. But the building itself seems to be very secure, so we're looking at that.
Help my rub collection, Ken, is what's the restriction, if any, on distance to school? Or church?
There is a distance, but it's at least well beyond.
I think it's a thousand feet to a school.
Or church.
Or a church, yeah.
The church is close to the school.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay, we're good.
We have actually been in conversations that they've got a permit that they've submitted to me for next month. In our conversations, we've discussed care group code as well as state statute regarding these issues surrounding medical marijuana. If we all understand.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And that brings us to the seat.
So I might have missed it, but what was your name again?
My name is Robert Ellis, E-L-L-I-S, like Ellis Island. And I have an English accent.
Do you have any other, have you operated a type of business like this before, or is this your first?
This is our first venture of this nature.
Okay, but you seem to know a lot about how things need to work.
I have had my own company before, yeah.
So you've researched that.
Yeah, yeah, and I've run my own business in the past. Before I retired, I had a consulting business for 20, 30 years. But we believe in the product. The medical marijuana has, I mean, there's been a wave that's brought it to this, to the point where it is now. Several states, many states in fact, have approved that. Our belief is that being a natural product, it's preferable to many pharmaceuticals which have side effects and constantly cause additional problems beyond the initial issue, so.
Will next month's discussion on this be a public hearing?
Yes. So we'll do a site design review. They've done kind of a traffic flow with the basic floor plan of an existing site.
And this will be the preliminary review next month, okay? A butter is notified and all that?
Yeah.
Now, interesting question. That's a rented, that's a rented spot.
It will be rented, yes.
Are we going to make sure that the other tenants, even though they're not owners, property owners? In fact, that might be all the way up and down Bennett Drive. Where you've got people in buildings that, go ahead.
Isn't there a limitation of 500 feet?
Yeah, yeah, but that still covers a lot of businesses. If we, if we only sent notices out to the landlords, some of whom are far away from here, the tenants might not get the word. Okay? That's, I know, it's more work. Well, you drive down the street. Or hand them out personally or whatever.
What was the prior business that was at 159?
It was, I want to say Imperial Hair Care. It was a wholesaler's for...
Oh, I remember it now, yeah, yeah.
So not anyone could go there. You had to be a licensed physician or barber.
This is on Bennett Drive?
Motor vehicle registration building has several little shops in it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's inside that building?
Four, five units in the middle, yeah.
Across from Burger King.
Yeah, yeah, from the empty Burger King.
All right, it's registering.
Okay. Any other board members have questions for Mr. Ellis? And we will see you next month, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen, I think we can go, I think in an hour or two.
Including the minutes? All right, let's go back to the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I approve of the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call, starting with Dan.
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Sorry. Amanda?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Yes. David and myself, it's unanimous. Okay. We have now a public hearing for a proposed solar array. This is a preliminary site design review. There will have to be another hearing for the final site design review if we get through this part. Do we, we have a 30-day window problem again next week, next month? I know that the next meeting should be four weeks from tonight.
It should be. I think the target date for construction is well at the 2000.
Okay, so we don't have to feel constrained. So the second hearing might wind up being in October. You can have the hearing. I thought it was 30 days.
Between preliminary and final.
Right, I have done the math.
Yeah.
Well, I've done the math, it's 28 days. Four weeks. That's why I raised that question in my email to you.
So what I'm handing out is my review of pending application from Arustic Renewables. Careful, ink's still wet.
Just replace the one that was in our packet?
Nope, these are my notes.
Oh, 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 oh. Thank you. So we have, may we be introduced?
Yes, hi, I'm Kelly Rio, and I'm, I live in Portland. I'm from the valley originally, Fort Kent.
Oh, so you knew how far Caribou was?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, have editor.
Okay, good, thank you. My name's Kelly Rio, like I said, and I'm a co-owner of Arustic Renewables. I've been in the renewables business for about 10 years and the land business about 18 years. Buying land and developing it and cutting woodlots and doing whatever I can do with, with the land that I buy. So I don't know if you guys have been following the solar push in Maine since the legislation last year passed. So what I decided to do was, in 2018, I acquired 93 acres on Dow Siding Road for logging purposes. So that was a property that I owned entirely. So when the solar rush took, you know, took hold, I decided to pursue the piece for solar. And I have a couple other projects going as well, Madawaska and Grand Isle. All three projects have been permitted already by the DEP, so those, those permits are in place. So what I'm looking to do is a 4.95 megawatt project on Dow Siding Road. It's in the queue for that, that amount. The legislation that was passed was for no more than 5 megawatts was the, was the standard that, that they put forth. So, I mean, it's, like I said, it's off Dow Siding Road. It was originally a woodlot. That was the reason I purchased it. That's about it. I mean, it's a pretty straightforward proposal. It's the foot, the footprint has to be no more than 20 acres to not get into sitelaw with the DEP. So consequently, we went right to 19.99, including my access easement off of Dow Siding Road. So the footprint itself is 18.79, and then the easement is 1.20. And then, like I said, I mean, I'm in the queue. I'm working with Verson right now, Verson Power. So that's about all I can, I guess, tell you at this point. Everything has been, you know, drafted by the co-owner in this, this venture, Arustic Renewables, is actually the owner of this engineering firm down in Cumberland, a pretty large civil firm, Peter Mahar of CD and Mahar Engineers. They're permitting, they probably have about 40 solar projects right now in front of them. So they're one of the leading permiters for the state. And, and like I said, Peter Mahar is my partner on these projects, on these solar projects. Not the land business, but the solar ventures. So I'm ready for questions if there's any.
I think I would add, Mr. Chair, that this is probably the most complete application that I've seen.
I noticed that yesterday.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, very complete.
Appreciate that a lot.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I...
If you, board members will note, if you will, that the CEO has gone through and put his X mark, meaning I presume conformance with the requirements.
Just checking the boxes.
Okay.
I did add a couple comments that we hadn't thought about earlier. I know in Mr. Rio's first use on this land was logging, and there was an access road constructed. The question I always have, did we get permission from Public Works to do that curb cut in that access road?
I, I mean, since it's on, I thought because it wasn't on the bypass and...
So it's not a state road, but we do ask our Public Works guy to... And basically, what he would do is he would provide you a cover for the curb cut.
Okay, okay, so basically like an entrance permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can take that, that's a minor detail. And the other comment that I had from other staff was, is it possible to leave a beauty strip out front? So some, some trees that will be harvested?
Yeah.
To the fence, so there's, so there's a visual barrier here.
Yeah.
And that's not required, that's not a requirement. That is, you know, an observation.
Sure, so the, okay, obviously the footprint will have a fence. If you can picture the property, if you guys know the property, I mean, you can't really miss it going down the bypass. I mean, there is, you know, there is some wood there. You know, there's nothing really large, so I mean, as you approach, as you approach the site, you probably will see it no matter what type of vegetation I leave because I've removed a lot of marketable timber. We've left a lot of wood, but I mean, the bigger stuff has been removed. So, I mean, we can, you know, we can certainly, I have buffers built into the siding itself.
So on the design, you will see the buffers built in, metal setbacks, an additional 30-foot buffer, I believe. Also is the right of way for the CUV Force Main that runs right along the highway.
The...
I think gives more setback. If you've been cutting on that parcel, I haven't noticed it from the highway.
Well, yeah, exactly.
So...
Yeah, I cut on it to your... So the very end of that property that is in the RC2 zone, directly across from the convention center, is the part you will notice that was, was really clear.
Yeah.
Was clear for development. So the next portion of that lot down is where the solar farm will happen. And you're right, there's still a lot of, a lot of trees.
Yeah, even the old pine that used to be decorated for Christmas. Still there.
See, the thing about it is, to get, to squeeze in almost 5 megawatts, I, I need to utilize pretty much every inch of that, that footprint. Because as it is right now, with my buffers and my shading, my shading buffers, I mean, I'm squeezed right in at, at where I, where I'm at. Obviously, it's all, like I said, it comes out to be just under 20 acres. I mean, I don't really think that leaving trees or taking away trees at this point is going to make a difference because, because like I said, there's no big wood in there anyway. So if there was a lot of mature wood, you wouldn't see it, but that's all gone anyway. So I don't know how I could...
Well, again, it's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement. And the stuff in the, in the, and the other buffers will keep growing.
I don't see how it's going to be any different than the one we approved last month.
That's correct.
As far as visibility.
And...
I think it'd be, it's going to be less, Christine.
I, yeah, yeah.
And vehicles are going, you know, vehicles are going pretty fast through there, so. And I mean, there's really nothing wrong with looking at solar panels.
There's this great big one down on 495 in Massachusetts that I go by.
Oh, yeah.
I've never been offended by it.
No, no, no. No, I, I used to work in the wind business, or I still do, and I mean, the wind business is, that's a different, you know, that's a different ballgame. You know, that you can see them and you can hear them if you're up close, but I mean, solar is, there's really nothing, nothing happening. It's just, you know, collecting power and putting it into the grid.
Absolutely working for you.
Yeah.
How far are you from the power line?
From the three-phase?
Yeah.
I'm about, three-phase is on the opposite side of the road from the convention center. There's a guy with a little firewood business, I think. So that's, that's where I got to interconnect. However, I don't have to do anything with the poles there. That's what Emira takes on, and that's what I pay them for upgrades. So right now, I'm in the transmission study with them, the system impact study. And, and that's whenever they, they lay it all out as to the, the cost and the construction. But they build that portion from where I come down the easement right here to Dow Siding Road. So that's about 900 feet, and then they take it from there. They take it from Dow Siding Road to the point of interconnect.
One of the engineering drawings has some notes on it that show where that interface is going to happen.
Okay.
So those are the only notes I had. Like I said, they're very complete.
I thought there was a huge set of power lines or that...
Yeah, it's high voltage.
Those are high.
Yeah, I can't, I can't tap into those.
This whole system is designed to tap into, what do they call, medium voltage?
Yeah, those are all high voltage and it's just you can't, I mean, wind, wind facilities can tap into that because I mean, you're looking at maybe 100 megawatts, but smaller projects, you've got to go into three-phase. And then the next big part of this is capacity in the substations. So this goes into, it's called the West Caribou Sub. And there's capacity right now, although I don't know that previous solar farm, I don't know if, where they're at, but there's a queue position ahead of me, queue position 50, which I don't know if they're permitted with you guys, or... They are? Okay, so...
And they're, they're about 100 yards from the sub.
And that's the revision project? Is that revision? Or the local?
Yeah.
Local guys? Yeah. So, so my project is after them and there's room for another, another project. I think there's about 12 megawatts of capacity. So the, the first thing in this business is always finding room in substations. Then you find your three-phase, and then you find your land, and then, so.
I believe everything we've seen so far is in order. I would entertain a motion to call a public hearing for the final site design review at our October meeting.
Could I ask a question on that, if you don't mind? So is there any way to, to push that up potentially to September? Because the thing with this, with solar is, everything like time is of the essence. And I know you might have heard, heard that before, but it's, what I've got to do is, I have about 12 megawatts in development. And what I need to do is, every day I'm, I'm pushing forward, and what I look to do is get all permitting completed. Like I said, DEP's all done. Even for Caribou and Grand Isle and Madawaska. I've got to keep pushing because what I've got to do is lock up financing. And it's about a million dollars a megawatt to build these. So, you know, you're looking at 12 million bucks. And, you know, what I've got to do is I've got to secure financing for that. So even though it's like a month off, I'm still, you know, I'm still going forward every day. And when you have permits in hand, then obviously you can deal with the financing committees better. So I guess what I'm asking is, is, could I be on for September, or?
It would be in September, it would be on the 10th, our next regular scheduled meeting, but we might have to have, in addition to the motion that was due to...
Yeah, we did this one the last project, and since we set our own precedent.
It's doable.
We're kind of stuck with it. So what will happen is that we'll hold the hearing in one month, actually 28 days. And then, assuming everything goes fine there and we say we're in approval mode, we won't put the final signature on it for two more days after that.
Really? Okay, so that would be in...
To meet our 30-day requirement.
Yeah, okay, so that would be, yeah, September, whatever. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's the best we can do.
No, no, that, that works. So basically, you want me to get in touch with your, your road commissioner?
Yep, and that's, that's very basic.
Okay.
He'll run down there and take a look.
Okay, okay. And was there anything else that, that I should address on the next set of plans, or?
Well, you've got your erosion control already designed and...
We know how you're treating the water. You're not adding any more signage and lights and sewer and water. So you're, you're good to go.
Okay, okay, good.
So I still need that motion.
I'll make a motion?
The unstated motion.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we have a public hearing on this site design, the final, for the Arustic Renewables on our September meeting.
Thank you, Drew. I'm moved in second, and is there any more discussion?
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
Are we required to approve this concept plan? Are you asking for an approval, or just, this is a review?
Yeah, you know, I was just...
Is approval is necessary?
Well, there's, I think the motion to hold the final site design review constitutes an approval.
Yeah, we've done the review.
Yeah.
And we set the date, so...
And there is no, there's no signature block for approval of the preliminary.
Very good. Does that make sense?
Those are the tools we have.
Okay.
Any, any questions about?
No, no, just talk with the road commissioner and that's it. And we can, we can stay in touch and if there's anything else.
Yeah, I'll forward you Dave's contact.
Okay. Dave will let, okay, good, okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Yeah, good night.
Oh, yeah, we do have to take a vote.
Yes.
Ian says yes. Christine?
Yes.
Drew? Not you.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and yes, all right. We're good. Okay, that hearing is closed. I got to get my paperwork shuffled. I've had a lot of work went into this already. All right, then, that hearing's closed. I will open the next advertised hearing, which is on the subject of a site plan for storage facility out on Washburn Street. Mr. Tingley, are you here? You are here.
Yes, I am. Good evening. My name's Bruce Tingley. I purchased some land out on the Washburn Street, Washburn Road, with the intentions of putting in storage units. I'd like to get in at least 12 units this year, and then next year grow onto that. But the biggest portion of it is to basically just put in some storage units out there.
Do you plan on fencing off that property?
No. Across the front is, we've planted trees, and it's only one way in because you can't get down over the ditch, so.
Help me out. I could not tell, reading the map, because the print is so small, exactly where this is.
It's right across from the old Peanuts Apartments, the church out there, towards the Lion's Picnic Ground.
It's not telling me enough.
Just past Sauber's.
Just past Sauber's on the left.
Okay. Okay. All right.
The old Lion's Picnic Ground isn't far away either.
No, it's right on the right-hand side around the corner.
Lion's Picnic Ground?
I've never known the Lion's Picnic Ground. I've only been here 25 years.
I grew up out there.
Just about that time, too. Maybe a little longer.
That may be why.
Veterans Homes, right?
I know where the Veterans Homes are.
Yeah, just keep going.
Yeah.
It's just behind the wooden line.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate the education.
About a half mile from the...
About a half mile from the Tibero Road.
Exactly. And I, I used to own the 30 acres, which is next door. But then I got the 29.74 here. And my daughter's purchasing the other 30 acres from my ex-wife right now, so we'll have 64 acres there in total, so.
There's the name, Daughter's International. Alright, I'm looking at Mr. Murchison's review. This is very handy tool.
So, so I did make some notes, um, initially, we indicated the location was on Washburn Street. But it was a vacant lot, so it didn't actually have an address assigned until very, very recently. So we're able to find that 490 Washburn Street.
How are your transplanted trees doing in this very dry?
Some are doing really good. Others have passed away. But there'll be some more there this, this winter.
Did you get at least a 50% survival rate?
About 45, yeah.
Yeah, no feeling.
One good thing, there's all kinds of them down in the woods.
So as we move along, in my view anyway, I, I found that, um, a difference in the book in page number is according to my property back, my property card in the actual survey. So we'll, we'll figure that out. So really, the board has been filled out, I think, to the best of, of, uh, there are a couple things we need to work on. We've been, actually, Mr. Tingley's been very good to talk to. He's been very responsive to our calls and he's, uh, been working away diligently, he's been, you know. Under night, item number five, names and addresses of consultants. He does have a person to come in and help with the concrete. Envisions a Thomas building. So almost people would be constructing.
Yes, yep.
On-site or hauling it in?
On-site. Yeah, it's a 20 by 60. So we, we did the on, we're doing the onsite.
So that's 12 units?
All metal or wood?
All metal. It's a blue-gray, blue-gray siding with a light blue-gray roof.
12 units or 10?
12 this year. They're nine, nine and a half by nine and a halves.
Right. So just the one building is all that you're asking for?
Right now, yes.
Concrete pad?
Concrete pad. Five and a half inches with blueboard underneath.
Have you considered putting a permit in for all the buildings that you plan at once?
I'm doing a personal unit, which I got permission for today to do, which is a 16 by 36. That's for my own personal, the tractor, the mower, the stuff that I'm going to need there. But next year I'd like to do two more units. Probably with 16 or 20 units in them, smaller units of course. But, uh.
If you know how that's going to be laid out, you might want to include it in this permit. They're good for how many years? Two years?
A year.
One year? Would you do it in a year?
I'm hoping to get it in by next, next year.
Something to think about.
Yep.
You could just put it all together on one.
Yep.
One application.
Yeah, 'cause it's all going to be on the top side. Out towards the road area, right on the top of the field, it's high, no water problems, no.
That's nice.
Actually, it's a really good view of the town of Caribou.
Planning to prepare the surface that people will drive and walk on?
Yes, I have a Mike Martin construction out of Prescott. Mike's gonna, uh, do most of the hard work for me.
Crushed stone?
It's gonna be, um, three-inch stone to start. And then we're gonna put in crushed in the bottom on the base.
So it's, it's not gonna be an open field?
No, no.
So, so there is a bit of work left to do. We don't have any indication exactly what the storm management will be or where the, where the water flows currently, which we do have a very good, uh, survey by Blackstones with topo on it, so I think that we.
With what on it?
Topo graphic.
Okay.
So, so I think we can, we can figure out where the water's gonna go. So erosion, sediment control while you're, while you're building, we'll, we'll need to know more about that. Finish grading, as we said, we need an idea about the parking and entrance. Mr. Tingley's already approached, uh, Department of Transportation for his curb cap. We're gonna follow up, make sure that's good for commercial as well.
Is that what this is here?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I did have a question, if I may, on the, uh, the state fire marshal and the Caribou Fire Chief. This, uh, commercial building would not need to be, uh, reviewed by them?
There will not be people inhabiting the building. There will not be people in this building.
Okay.
It's a storage, cold storage truck.
Cold storage unit.
Alright.
No water sewer?
No water, no.
Sewer, so, okay. The only question I had on it.
Any other board members' questions?
That's good.
Okay, now, how do we want to do this one?
Well, I think as far as a preliminary review, we've got kind of a laundry list that Mr. Tingley will, will need to keep working on and will keep working through.
Yep.
And, uh, I should think that within 14 days should be ready to come back.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. I'm just, sooner or later, we're gonna have to get ourselves back into the 30-day thing. Or else it's gonna change that regulation.
It's a calendar thing.
Change the regulations, say 30 days or next meeting, next monthly meeting.
Yeah, that's.
We don't get hung up on this every time.
I don't think or next meeting works, but we, we don't have to get hung up on that right now.
Right, right.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to ask for a.
Is there anyone else from Congress?
I'm sorry. I don't, I know why this gentleman's here and I don't think it's about this, so. Good. Well then, we, we need a motion to do the final site review at our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we schedule the final concept review for our next meeting. Tucker?
Got a second from David? Any further comments or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, is that contingent on completion of the remaining items?
Or make sure that the application's complete.
Yeah, if, if it's not, we'll open the hearing because we advertised it and then recess it until things are fixed.
Okay. Thank you.
That's my plan for going forward. Okay, then we'll put it to a vote. Dave?
Yes.
Is it yes, Frank?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Yes.
Drew? Christine?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And myself, Ian Anis. Boy, we are in good unanimous order tonight. Thank you all. Thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
According to what I have here, the next item is old business.
Yes, and I do, I do believe Mr. Duplessis is here.
Yep, Mr. Duplessis, come on in. No, I, I, it's not clear to me what's going on here.
So what, what happened is through a series of events, this whole concept of our, our approved permit, uh, went to city council. And they discussed it and sent it back, um, for clarification about conditions on the permit.
Mm-hmm.
So, and handwritten notes, I couldn't even find in the minutes, but we're on, on the signed permit itself, said fencing on the north and south side.
That's right. Which I just.
Duplessis, uh, made the point, and it's a very good point, that from, from the north side, you cannot see the business because all those buildings are lined up in order. So the, the buildings are actually the barrier. You can't see the business from that. So what we're asking is that we forgive that one condition. The fence on, on the south side is already complete. Other issues that, that we had talked about were, were clean siding, which is almost, you had to go over to work here, that cook's feeding that. I think with, with the exception of that one condition, that really, I can see, you don't see the business. You don't see the cars he's working.
What about nights?
Or the rest of the, the property from that side. Um, I've actually been onsite. Noise is brought up. But noise has never been complained about. There's never been an incident fired at the police regarding noise. Actually, we've been there and I've, I've had Mr. Duplessis turn on his, his compressors. I've not seen the noises issue.
Okay. What assurances do we have if we decide to do this waiver? That this isn't gonna come back to us again through city council?
I cannot predict what the city council might, might want.
That was a new one for me.
But I, I had the indication from the chair that, um, we wanted to put a test.
Alright, that's good enough for me.
Is that how you understood that?
Yes, he was tired of listening to it. He said he had enough. And Ken, Ken's come over and you couldn't hear my compressor until he got five feet to the door and then I opened it. Then he could hear it. It's just kind of odd that the gentleman next door is saying my air compressor's going down my wall across eight inches of con, six or eight inches of concrete, over 40 feet and just coming into his bedroom. I don't understand how that vibrates. But I've gone through hell for two and a half, three years.
I've thought, I've been around the property now, I've thought.
And just harassment, harassment, harassment. And I've been good about it. I haven't retaliated. I haven't dawned anybody, haven't complained to anybody. I've just did my business and kept to myself. But every time I turn around, Ken smiles and he says, "We got another issue." So we try to work through it.
And we're working through it.
Yeah.
So is this north fence, uh, part of the dispute? The alternative is just to build a fence as permitted?
I don't believe I should have to put a fence. I've got 100 feet of, uh, buildings and tree line.
Okay, I understand.
Gentleman next door is four feet from my property line.
I understand better now. So what my concern is that the, the, the planning board approved a contingent upon this for some reason. I wasn't there. The note was made.
The note was made, um.
And we, we can now not figure out.
Didn't get reflected in the minutes, so it, uh.
You know, why it was there, but there must have been a reason why it was there.
It was an option. And then later time after that, when Todd was here, we discussed it and I said, "Listen, I've got buildings here. He can't see nothing on my other side." And the, most of the complaints are coming from the other sister-in-law or the sister and the brother-in-law. That's where they all come from.
I'm still having trouble connecting all this complaint and dispute with what we're doing here with the north fence.
No, and, and, and we should keep that separate. We, we don't need to get into personalities, but what we're asking is, is do we want to stick with the condition, that condition that was placed? Again, it's hard to find. If we go back and find it handwritten on that document only. The argument that the, the building itself is a barrier, is also a tree line, that's a barrier. Look at our other ordinances, even for junkyards. The tree line is a suitable barrier. It could be earthbound.
That clinches it there, I think. If we've got ordinances that say tree lines are good enough. And I certainly would like to see.
I think Mr. Duplessis has made a reasonable and maybe more than reasonable effort to comply with everything that the planning board has asked of him in having this use at his property. And what do we, what do we think?
I personally cannot recall why we conditioned a north fence. That's not my writing.
No, it's actually my writing.
Okay.
See, I thought we, we agreed when we had discussed it before that I offered to put a fence near the netto's to keep peace. Because we didn't have to have on, on the other side because my buildings and the tree line was hiding everything.
It is actually a fence for automotive and airsoft. He doesn't matter halfway.
Mr. Chair, do you, uh, you interested in the motion?
I am.
I move we, uh, approve the conditions that have been satisfied.
I don't think we can do that. I think what we have to do is
Exclude.
Make a motion to waive part of the condition.
The north fence.
The north fence.
Okay, so that's what you want? I move that we, uh, approve a condition that the, uh, north fence not be required.
Can I amend this document? Alright, I'll initial the amendment when you, when we get it done. Alright, the motion then is to waive the requirement for a north boundary fence on this, uh, site plan.
I'll second that.
Or use permit application. And it's been seconded by Amanda. Any more discussion? Well, I'll start with you again.
No.
Dan says no. Christine?
Uh, yes.
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 And yes. Okay, thank you all. And, uh, catch me.
Let it go on each side of the country.
Oh yeah, thank you for your time, everybody.
Okay. You want that? In the minutes, we reflect the vote anyway, so. Right. Where are we? Oh, we're up to eight. Staff report.
Very good. It's been, uh, extremely busy, uh, start of August. Um, we're working away our, our light initiative and demolition. We have taken, uh, five buildings down from our list of, of six. This was left over from last year and, uh, it got set aside while we took care of the River Road demolition projects at the time. So we've done well this year, not only taking down the buildings on, on our existing list, but we were also able to offer guidance to, uh, to private landowners to help them make their decisions. We're, we're getting some of these source lots out of the way. We're, we're, in the light initiative, we're looking at, uh, new and innovative tools. Uh, one would be a land bank. I think we found an entity that might be very seriously considering being that entity should we ever construct a land bank organization. In order to construct this land bank light tool, there would be, uh, some amendments to our existing ordinances or order. I think there'll be ordinances. So this will have to be done by elected officials. Using the model from Sanford, I believe there was four amendments that could be made. And that will allow, uh, ownership and transfer of land. Things like that. So, so we've been working hard on it. The, the actual committee hasn't met since March when COVID struck. Of course, we weren't meeting in close quarters. We're getting back together again. And we'll be resuming the, the conversation actually with council. They want to review our, our policies about tax-free properties. How we, we put them out to bid. Review of these properties before we just automatically allow them to go back out. Issues like consent agreements, consent agreements to help put value back into the properties. So we're working hard on, on the, on our light initiative. Um, we've rekindled the. We've rekindled the bird's eye cleanup. We were on the site last week and the week before. So we moved back on the site with the help of McGillon Construction. Basically, we needed his excavator to move some stuff around so we could see what we did. We had three areas of interest identified in our phase two cleanup study. One remains with BCP, so petroleum polluted in the ground. That will have to be removed at some point. As we seek further funding to clean up the site, that must be removed. However, there were two other areas of interest, area of interest, I believe, seven and eight, that were kind of just mounds of metal, metal dirt, plastic items. So it appeared to our engineer, Dave Hawkins of CES, that this was left over from a boneyard and they literally just scraped the ground and left it in a big pile. So we used McGillon's, with McGillon's help, we're able to remove some dirt and pull some items out of these piles. And what we found was metal, tires, plastics.
So is that stuff they got put there before the bird's eye plant got built?
Um, before, during, and after. Over the whole history of this thing, I mean, it was simple. They did peas for a while. They did Northland frozen food for a while. They did starch plant for a while. So this thing evolved over time. But a lot of that stuff remained on site. As I said, the old boneyard, you didn't have to clean things up. Pushed in a pile initially for area of interest seven. So as we separated out the pile, we found one small chunk of asbestos pipe down. All we found, thirty loads that went through. So that's, that's a pretty good head start on a cleanup effort. What we found to the rear, if you've ever been around potato processors, you know that a lot of fines, small rocks will come off the conveyors while potatoes are coming in. A lot of evidence of that. So they were scraping up the fines in the piles and they were just pushing them out fast. So there's an area to the far south of this property, there's a series of little duck truck mountains. So, yeah, there's some metals, some tires and things like that, but we're finding a lot of evidence of potato waste and these fines and small pellets. We're encouraged that not only did we save a lot of money on the upcoming cleanup effort, it's going to look really good when we go to DEP and say, "We're looking for this money, for this cleanup money." It would be a round field plan. But we also reserve all this developable land. Because the initial idea was to take all this debris, bury it on site, seal it in place forever and put it in the deep. But that portion of the property would have been, could have been used for maybe a used spot, park, maybe something like that. But in doing this little exercise, we've maximized our local area.
Great.
Good team. So we've got a couple of issues around town. And the most glaring one can be seen on the access highway as you're heading out towards Dodo's, if anyone's familiar with it. There's a property that all of a sudden has all these junk cars. So we'll call that 412 Access Highway. It's a pop-up junkyard. We've sent notices of violation. The notice of violation went unanswered. We're having a hard time finding the actual owner of the property. Been moving around. And in addition to that, apparently there was a handshake deal and sold the property to somebody else we can't find. Ultimately, we sent a notice illegally. I believe it's next Wednesday. Next Tuesday. That'll be thirty days before that summons. Also first on Sunday. Second court may clean up that property. So we've never really gone to that extent for a long time. We're kind of thinking outside the box. We've had the DEP on the site. Their response was if that oil spilt from those wrecked cars leaves the site, we have to clean up and charge the owners. We can't find the owners. We've talked to the state police and the DMV, the owner there, thinking is there clear title to any of these old junk cars? Is there clear ownership of this material? They said there really is nothing they can do until they start selling these things. So what they're doing now is they're dumping them up on end and they're injecting fluids onto the ground, adding them up in small enough pieces that they can bring them to a scrap yard. So catalytic converters, batteries. Out of a nasty site. Again, we're trying to think outside the box. How we're going to handle these things. And I think that once we have a good policy in place, there's two or three that we can attack at one point. Stay tuned for the pop-up junkyards. Council took action Monday evening and decided not to award a quick claim deed to, for payment taxes on 110 Wasprun Road, Wasprun Street. They see it as a nuisance property. We'll need to notify the owners and that they should remove their property, but it's not a city property. That's the story that's ongoing.
Fill me in a little bit. Why, I know it's a decrepit building.
Yep.
It's just up the street from me, unfortunately. But the current status is the city owns it?
Current status is the city took it for non-payment of taxes.
Right.
As you follow along the law, you can get to the eleventh hour and the pass owner record come back and reacquire the land. Be a quick claim deed for payment of taxes. However, the city doesn't have to allow that. The city can claim that it's a dangerous building, this is a property. Retain that building. It's always a bit fair and well. It's ongoing.
Right now, the city has refused to
Not return the property.
To return the property. So then you said something about getting them in to take their stuff out. I don't understand that.
Well, so they're taking, the city has taken the property, but the contents of the building still belong to other people.
Okay.
So we're, we're trying to find a finer point to this whole sequence. This hasn't happened for a long time. So we're working our way through it together with the PV, city council, and your building inspectors and myself. We spoke very briefly a moment ago about 569 Van Mier Road. Through the course of all these action to reaction between the property owners, the neighbors, and this is from the Netto family to the Duplessie family, to Mr. Chapman on the end. What happened is kind of ironic in the end because in all these complaints and the flurry of activity back and forth, ended up guiding us to an illegal septic system on his brother-in-law's property. The consequences of that was there was a complaint that went to DEP. And DEP came to us and now it's our problem. We have a legal septic system in the city of Carroll. So we were able to give guidance to Mr. Chapman's advocate. We're currently working on small, small community grants for septic. I made that program available to them, explaining to them how that works. I also explained how to seek out other agencies' help. FHA does low-interest loans for these kind of property maintenance. And ACAP is able to. At the end of the day, they, they're working with ACAP. I know that they've, they've selected a contractor. Dick St. Peter will be over there. He's already been over there. Site evaluator, he's been there onsite, played out the septic system. And that project's still ongoing, but we expect to see it for a mention for that. So working together with the local plumbing inspector, officials and myself for that project.
What was the legal part of the system?
It was cobbled together from a mini bulk. So if you imagine one of these small plastic containers, like maybe fertilizer or maybe just water. Like the lawn service.
So it was a self-install, unengineered?
Two hundred seventy-five gallon container.
Yeah.
Plastic. So into that was his pipe from the plumbing of the house. Out of that was kind of a straight pipe perforated. Self-engineered, illegal septic system.
Not permitted.
A system nonetheless. So Mr. Chapman's giving help with that. ACAP's going to get him that new septic system. And as I said, the contractor will agree to that plumbing permit. It should be good to go. The small communities grants I mentioned really quick, we've got two, if possible, three projects. Oh, Mrs. Dubby was here. I actually looked at one of the projects. So we're at the stage now, we've got our site evaluations done, the systems are designed. We've advertised. In next week's newspaper, you will see an advertisement for a contractor to come construct two, three subsurface water disposal systems. Hopefully we'll have these installed in September, fourth of July.
Terrible you even mentioned that.
So it's, like I said, it's been, it really gives you a little.
But
It's great for her.
Exactly. There's progress being made.
All right. The manager wanted to extend his policy. He wanted to be here tonight to present his definitions for chapter thirteen, for the work on chapter thirteen. So what we'll have is, I guess, for information now, for the next meeting.
And you just emailed those out?
I just re-forwarded Denise's original email out to everybody, I hope. I did it for myself, so we'll look and see if that worked or not and make sure that everyone gets a copy. He also brought in a final page that he worked on.
Yeah, I'm going to keep this out because that's going to go with what's in my email inbox. Okay. Before you go talk about your transportation plan, we have two ladies in the back are here for some reason.
For 110 Wasprun Street.
Okay. Would you, one of you like to come up and tell us what's happening from your standpoint?
We're still waiting to find out if it's going to be returned to us. So this way we can start our work on it. Because we're planning on fixing whatever needs to be fixed, roof. We were told we can't even go on the premises to do the lawn. Because I was going to do that too. We were even told we couldn't even go to the council meeting, so. Yep. The cop that came and told me I need to get off the property.
Sounds funny.
Is there a phone number I can reach you folks at?
Sure. My phone number is 207-551-0136.
Are you the owner record of what, Ken, why?
Uh, I am. Me and her. And she's my daughter. I usually handle it all for her, so.
Which I'll make sure you know what you need to know.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I thought you said that the folks were asked to go on the property and take their own personal property.
They have not been notified yet. We didn't have a contact that we could call.
Ah, you didn't have the contact. Okay. Well.
I expect now that we'll do that, we'll write that up in the morning.
Well, if we're supposed to go and get our personal belongings, that is there.
Well, what I'll do is
Well, that may not, that may or may not be any longer true, based on the fact that we, the city now knows who you are.
I'll relay our conversation to the city manager and we'll reach out.
Okay.
They didn't update, give it back or not? Because I paid the taxes and the used taxes already.
We'll make sure they reach out.
All right, let us know.
Thanks for coming in.
It'd be disappointing if they don't get the property back after paying the back taxes.
Yeah, this sounds like a bit of a pop-up. All right, but we can't solve the city council's problems tonight. So where are you, Ken, with your comprehensive plan?
Something interesting happening, kind of a weird turn of events. We brought to our attention that there are access issues down along, between the access highway and Route One. But the businesses in that area. So currently, there's a right-of-way access through a property from one side to access a property in the middle.
Where was this now?
So, so where the DMV is now, I'm very going. So access to the Griffiths property where the car dealership is, is via a right-of-way through his property. On the other side, there's an access to Route One, so a driveway. But the state of Maine doesn't recognize that access.
It's a city-owned.
So, right. And so this could be really complicated for the landowners over there and it could run into a lot of trouble. And so the manager said, "We need to look at our transportation plan and figure out what we're going to do with these access." So I looked around and studied and went through our archives and found nothing for a transportation plan except for the comprehensive plan. So that brings us to the comprehensive plan. And so if you look through the document, most of the transportation plans are actually drawn up by the Northern Maine Development Commission and they do an excellent job. I did know while I was going through there that some things have happened since the last time that we reviewed the transportation plans, even most recently. And that we do have another public transportation offering in the works. So there's a public service grant, CDVG grant going through here right now, personalized ride dispatch. So we're thinking in 2021, they'll be doing dispatching rides for people that need a little store, to get to the hospital, to do whatever it takes. In a two-part effort. Basically, they could make people aware that the arts bus is coming to your neighborhood if that's available. There could be volunteer drivers. But everything hinges around the dispatch. And so they've currently bought dispatch software specially made for this kind of quasi-volunteer effort. And they expect there to be a lot. So I made a note in there that that's for other arts transportation, that it'll be a local option. So if we move on towards the end of the document, I actually made a new section called Proposed Development and Development Interconnectivity.
Well, before you go to four, there's just one thing I found in reading this. On the package page number sixty-eight. Up at the top.
So I, I'm trying to figure out, we don't have SciTel.
That's, that's what I was asking. Are they?
So now the property belongs to Dana Cassidy. The parking lots go with that?
The lease goes with it?
So, and I don't know if it's a lease or ownership.
Well.
So I need, I need to research that section.
Yeah, it says, it says here that it was leased, but this is an older document now, so.
Right.
I don't know if SciTel ever actually bought those lots or just purchased the rights to use them.
Well, yeah. So Dana Cassidy bought, I think, I think he bought all the rights with it. But I didn't have anything that told me that. So I did highlight it.
Okay.
I need to go back.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to raise that because it caught my attention. Okay, that's, I just wanted to raise that, because it caught my attention.
And we did actually reach out to West Rogers Lots, around the parking lots, so.
So now is he the gentleman that picked up that building?
Yes. He's also looking for a disagreement to place a new sign or a fix to that. Cassidy's problem. So anyway, as we got, as I said, this whole thing came around, I really wasn't looking at getting back into the development, just reacting to the public hearings and all this stuff, the access issue. So rather than just say, okay, we got an issue in this one spot in town, we kind of did a more comprehensive look in the urban area, to see how we could get better interconnectivity, so we get our people from the neighborhoods, from the access highway, from Route One, to Beda Drive perhaps. So I really made a list. And sent along a patch map that's sitting on the side, the proposed roads are our suggested solutions to interconnectivity. So, the sort of, the access issue, we thought we would take care with what I call, which we've made up on the spot, Aldridge Extension. So that would give us access to development for that developed law, which Solomon always had plans for, were unrealized. There's also a utilities right-of-way that goes up along that area, so it opens up that area for development. It also allows access to both businesses that are already there, that have auto sales, Griffiths Auto, and it clears up that right-of-way for Gary Gohner's.
I'm still confused on that. Out in front of Napa, there's a great big beautiful entrance to Route One, which they just nicely fixed up.
The city here will retain a very small parcel of land. And so, when they did that driveway entrance, we retained the land, thinking, well, we wanted, really expressed it through the trails across. We didn't want to have gentlemen's agreement for the trails that cross right there, we wanted to have that all set, not have to worry about it ever again. The driveway was built as part of, I believe, the Griffiths Development.
Oh, yeah, long time ago.
But it was never accepted as a townway. And the state never accepted it as a driveway.
Why would it need to be a townway? I mean, it's just access to a parking lot.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a science behind it, but I do know that it can cost someone a lot, lot of money.
The Route One, the Route One curb cut was, there was some, I have the history on it, I'd have to go back, but the Route One curb cut was not being allowed, and still is not, right? There are no curb cuts on it. And that was a big, that took years to get that the way it is now, so.
So, part of what I wrote would address that problem, with what I call the extension, would clear out those access issues for those three or four businesses under it, and open up new area for development. It helps us fight sprawl, which is a good thing when you're talking about planning, and we get that secondary development stretching out on our highways.
So Aldridge is kind of where the, behind pines?
Correct, so that was our original industrial life park.
Okay.
Well, Aldridge is an accepted way, right?
Yep.
Isn't that where you park over there?
It's the parking lot, it's up on the other end.
So are you proposing that this be a city-funded, built road?
This is conceptual, it's a proposed idea, but it shows MDOT two that, okay, we've studied this issue, but we're addressing the access, so that is part of our transportation plan.
I see.
So in the future, Griffiths would have access to the extension road?
Right. Actually, it would be just probably, for the time being, would be just the existing entrance.
The driveway?
Right, right.
And run past the left side of Napa?
Because the city doesn't own the property that I drew that line across, for instance. Part of Gary Gohner's property does show a right-of-way, a fifty-foot right-of-way, that's a really strange, surrounds Dana Cassidy's property, comes over to Gary Gohner's property. It's not a right-of-way, it's not labeled as such, it's just a really odd advantage.
Dana Cassidy owns what over there?
So Dana Cassidy would have the Crown Park Inn, in the self-storage area.
Oh, okay.
And then there's, duty has the road ring, and then there's Gary Gohner, the D O E guy, Griffith Court, perhaps, is on that.
Okay.
So the lane on the other side, is that still Solomon Air's, Christine?
Hmm, yes.
It's still?
It is.
So also, as we look at that neighborhood, we've got, they're in that neighborhood that has a hard time getting all the way over to Cessna Drive, so this is the manager's plan, I think. But the Rose Street, kind of just dead ends.
Oh, yeah? I almost, Morton once got blindsided.
It not only does it dead end, but it dead end, you know, you're down the hill, so if you get down there, you're stuck in the snow, you're facing down.
Well, people come shooting out from, from between Walgreens and the next building over.
So there used to be an access in behind that park, that shopping mall?
Is that gone now?
It's been closed.
It's been closed, okay.
There's a big now, a third, and then you can't get through.
Is that where it would come out, basically, in the parking lot, almost?
Yeah, but it was never official, it was just, the parking lot, it was paved back there, because it was all parking lot, and people used it for a shortcut, and they did, they would bolt through their path. It was dangerous. So the manager foresees extending Rose Street down, but we do not own that right-of-way or anything like that, this is all just conceptual.
I'm gonna be retired before this comes up.
Yeah, it'll be the next offer in the planning, right? So, so as we talked about the Big Bird Eye cleanup effort, well, ideally, the end game, the only plan for this cleanup is redevelopment of the area. So we don't want this one big flat parking lot, we want to be able to have access to maybe a big box store, maybe, maybe a citizen healthcare living, or a wonderful house, maybe park space. So really, you're building a neighborhood. So access roads to and from there, both north-south and east-west, were envisioned, we did, provisioned for that. So, and I could make Armco Street extension, because it always slipped through, so I just called it siding road, because it's real narrow outside of it, not the extension. In the old days, there was a right-of-way in a road, gravel road kept down through there, the neighborhood kids knew it well, it was one of those sneaky little shortcuts back in the day.
Well, that, where you show siding road?
Yep.
That's smack dab in the middle of Porver's parking lot.
I think it's still conceptual.
And their oxygen tanks, and their hydrogen tanks. I wanna figure out who owns that.
Well, I guess you could imagine the trail almost taking this Old Bill Trail, which follows the Old Bill inside of that, so it can actually run a little bit as well. But the idea is having both the north-south and east-west access, and even the curb cut on Route One, which we make a lot of, is a good one. So and finally, we looked out into the area of the old Hilltop High School, those subdivisions now are mature, a lot of them have been retired, but there's still developable land there, and we have a developer that's actually looking, in his long-range plan, to do some sort of development. So by extending Pearisno down to York Street, they're opening up those lands for development. And again, they're saving us something to sprawl, spreading out Route One and the access highway. But also down towards Fontaine, what I call Northern Street Extension, so it opens up a whole area for newer housing stocks to be built, which is really, so, that, well, I'm gonna read it to you, but that's what I'm trying to do, recording this part of our presentation. It's fresh, please review the comment.
A lot of thought went into this, that's really neat what you've done.
Well, I had a pretty good tutor, I mean, she's my trainer.
Oh, is he?
Yeah. And that's all I had.
Will, that's excellent timing. Does anyone else on the board have anything they want to talk about?
I did want to bring up something about the Herschel Street multi-unit dwelling.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, we have a non-conformance issue on Herschel Street, we discussed it briefly. And I think the feeling is that this, that we can't open up development in a commercial area to first-floor residential uses.
What building is it?
So, so the area where.
It's next to Smalls? It's the building just before Smalls?
Yes, yes. So the ecumenical food pantry's there, it used to have office space and shops there in the old days, Nelson's, Pino lessons, things like that. What we're seeing more and more, and we're seeing it also across the way from there at Rick Solomon's place, they're not renting those places to businesses, they can't fill them with business interest, for whatever reason, there's no market for it. So we are seeing interest in, you know, nicer apartments. So, that leads us to the conundrum, we can't allow this to happen in our C1, or we're gonna have people hanging on on the sidewalks, blocking pedestrians from the store, and things like that. We'll be congesting our parking spaces, there's issues with having that kind of activity in a commercial zone. So, the thought was that we'll look at this neighborhood and say, okay, is this an issue where we need to go to our comprehensive plan update and say, this is a mixed-use area, we can allow that? Or maybe, maybe it's more of a situation that, okay, we'll pull down the R2 district line, develop these properties, make it possible for them to do their plan.
One of the things that, in my mind, it makes it possible, or feasible, to do first-floor housing there, is because they don't have direct street furniture.
Right.
So you don't have the commercial pedestrian traffic.
Their parking is tight, their parking is tight, they don't exit on the sidewalks.
Right. And that may be the thing that makes it discussable.
And so, as we look at historic use, we see the elderly housing, elderly low-income housing on one end of Herschel Street, and we see housing on the other end of Herschel Street. That's always been, it's always been. So it's, again, we have this issue with the interface between our zones, we have it on that drive, we have it on Sweet Street, we have it on Main Street, where our commercial smacks right up against the residential, and then turns back to commercial, and then eventually turns back to something else. Again, so we're addressing this in our comprehensive plan update, in our proposed zoning, do we rezone it? Do we call it a mixed-use zone, and use that tool instead? That's where we're at. And what I'm gonna do with these, with Rick Solomon and Mr. Kelly, is have that conversation, do they want to petition us to rezone? They're trying to make their plan, they're trying to develop their business, and we're sensitive to that. Comprehensive planning effort and proposed zoning takes a while. Yeah, that's, like, the whole discussion, like I said, is how it's been under.
So does they, does Mr. Kelly have a certificate of occupancy for the?
No.
Non-conformance, is there somebody living there?
Yes.
So what are we doing about that?
That's what sparked this discussion.
Right, okay. Because I'm just thinking about it, and Rick Solomon is asking for exactly that, and why can he have a tenant? Rick Solomon could have somebody move into his place probably tomorrow, or next week, and be doing the same thing, and we're going to, ten other people could do it downtown as well.
Well, and so what happened is Mr. Kelly put in a site designer view application, and as I started looking at the butters list, I said, oh my goodness, this is Pandora's Box. So we've got, we've got a new developer that's bought a large space in downtown area, we've got other developers that are looking to rent or lease space in existing buildings. This really would pull the top out of our commercial area in downtown. So, we backed up Mr. Kelly, withdrew his permit, brings us to our discussion break.
What was the story he told you about, he did that because he needed housing for caring personnel?
It was requested, as I asked.
What, did that happen recently, or did that happen?
It must be a long, long conversation.
Long time ago before we did zone it?
I've heard a lot of people trying to rent those spaces to traveling nurses and professionals from the hospital. So it's not a new idea, but apparently he was approached to see if he had, if he had spaces.
And is that who's living here now? A traveling nurse type situation? Okay. So he just went ahead and opened that up and said, okay, here is an apartment?
He got a permit to redevelop what he had, so all those apartments in the upper part, and no one stopped to think and tell him, by the way, the lower parts are commercial, he can't do that.
When you say he got a permit, when did that happen?
When he purchased, he purchased the building from, I believe, Gary St. Peter. At the time, he came forward and said he was gonna rent it, he built, sure he had the right, plumbing permits, right?
Yeah, but how far back?
He started a job with it.
How far back in time are we looking at?
Two years.
Two?
It's recent.
It's probably three.
I think it's three now.
And did he permit apartments upstairs and downstairs? And did we approve those?
He just did the halfway home, halfway home rescue was just there.
That's recent.
Right.
Right, those two, those two spaces downstairs.
So the ground floor has been done within the last six months.
Yeah.
Did he have a permit for that?
No, no.
So he rented it out?
Well, he understood that he did, he understands that he did, he saw a permit, he told him what he needed, so he just felt that that meant the whole rest of the building. So that's not solved, that's not solved.
I just have a feeling, yeah, a lot of other developers would be, that own property in downtown would have their nose out of joint and mouth kiss.
For very long.
Yeah.
Or we are gonna have people coming at us from all five angles.
So again, my idea is for, if we want to do something more rapidly, we suggest to landowners they petition.
We might have to.
That's got a lot of problems, and it's, you really have to be careful about that, because once you start doing that, how are you gonna say no to the next person that comes in? You're playing favorites with certain people, and letting them do it, and not letting another person do it, you do not.
If we're very careful, if we're very careful in defining our rationale for doing it, for instance. For instance, it doesn't front on a, on a street directly, you know, those kinds of things. We would have to pick a whole set of rationales that would allow us to let that request go forward.
Yeah, and be consistent about it going forward, that's the key. I mean, we have to be consistent, otherwise it's going to be a mess.
So I want you to start thinking about those rationales.
If it was up to me, I would, I would not even, I would not even entertain rezoning. I think that's, there's nothing you can do that's going to be airtight, that you're not going to have problems, you know, in my opinion. Cross that bridge when we come to it.
It won't be long.
Well, they haven't petitioned to be rezoned yet.
Right. How does the council feel about that kind of a thing? They would, they would end up being the authority in that, right?
It'll come to you first.
Well, I know, it'll come to you first, but they would have to approve it.
They would have to approve it.
And you get a sense for what?
You might want to have a coffee break with our manager and see what he thinks about it.
So I have asked Mr. Kelly not to put people downstairs, he's already got the warning, that's why it's like. We don't anymore, oh.
Yeah, pretty bold, pretty bold.
Okay, you know, again, you know, part of the conversation is, is the trend now for this latest generation is they don't want to drive, they want to walk. So where are our rentals, our residential units for those people that want to be adjacent to downtown, walk everywhere they go, don't have to drive?
It's a long walk to Cary.
Yeah, it is, it's cold in there.
Up that hill, yeah.
Move hard up to the airport.
Okay, I'm going to suggest that we are adjourning, any objections?
So if anyone has suggestions about that, please.